He's smart, he's very smart. He works very hard. There's almost nothing about government that he doesn't know. And perhaps most important, he's willing to stick up for what he believes in. He ticks off some really powerful people sometimes. But if he does, he does it with poise and does it for a good reason. So you're very lucky and I'm really, I mean that, Larry, thank you. Tell you one story, only one political story tonight. A true story, and I can tell now because that individual is dead. That is the famous alderman Fred Brody. No offense to the Larry Brody family, but Fred was the first ward in Chicago alderman. And the first ward, of course, had the reputation of being mobbed up. And actually Fred, after many years of city council, went to jail for mob activities.
Actually David, I'm putting in this photo. One of the aldermen behind him also went to jail.
Well, no offense, but a lot of my colleagues went to jail. Several others should have been jailed. Anyway, so Fred was the first ward alderman. Here's a story back during, when I was in the city council in the eighties. So that morning, I did not know Fred well, but I was talking to him before the council meeting, and he pointed out something, said, you know, his wife's maiden name is the same as mine, so his wife's maiden name was Orr. I thought nothing about it, but during the council meeting, what happened is when independents like me would speak, that Mel and Brody and Burke, they'd all stand before him and make a lot of noise, hoping to detract the press, because you know, powerful mayors like Daley and others did not like to hear from people like me. So they'd make a lot of noise, but when you're in politics, you get used to it and make it up. So that particular morning, I was speaking on something, they were making a lot of noise, and I kind of looked over and I said, well, you can see, just because Fred's wife is married to an Orr, hasn't done any good. Didn't think much about it, sat down, boom, immediately, fifteen, twenty press, they kind of run from where they sit over there, and showed a bunch of microphones in my face, and basically said, did you just call Fred's wife a whore? You can laugh about it now, but I'll tell you, you know, the mob is not dead in Chicago. And all day long, we kept getting those notices, hey, hey, this pet truck's out front for you. Okay, that's the only story. Now, something to mention, I'm not gonna, there's a lot of things I'd love to talk about, but I'm gonna pass through a lot of things that are office studies, which is pretty exciting. You mentioned the genealogy, you know, it's a whole new concept, it saves us a ton of money, and having genealogy online, now that people can get records they never could be able to find before. So it's a lot of things you can do if you really want to make government work, and that's the, really the goal of our office, to make things efficient. And maybe some other time, we'll talk about government efficiencies, and Larry was hinting when he talked about the two election boards, perhaps they should be combined, and of course, I believe they should be. And as you may know, voters voted to combine the Recorder's Office into the County Clerk's Office, that's the good news, it'll save us a lot of money, but it doesn't take place until 2020. And so there are things the government can do if we have time to talk about it. But on the local elections, the main thing I want to say very quickly, we've got information in the back, particularly about April 4th election, early voting and so forth, is that we know it, and you're here, you probably know it, but you know, we have seventy-two and three percent turnout presidential, but we might have nineteen percent turnout in the local election. And yet, that's where the money is spent. Fifteen, I don't know if I can even read that, but maybe somebody can. But we're talking about five billion dollars just spent by all the school boards in Cook County, five billion dollars. Okay, so these offices are important, and you know, there's lots of them. There'll be thousands of candidates unvalidated April 4th. Village trustee, village mayor, village president, alderman, park board, library board, school board, lots and lots of candidates. Something new I want to mention briefly is that we came up with an idea, I have some great staffs, I'm over here tonight, this idea, running for office toolkit. What that basically is, we want to encourage candidates, these offices don't pay much money, maybe new to people, we want healthy competition, the running for office toolkit gives you everything you need to know, online, all in one slot, about what it means to run for office. Okay, now that's important, because it can be confusing, we don't control everything, there's other shenanigans that go on, sometimes with electoral boards, but the bottom line is this kit is working, hundreds and hundreds of people have been using it. So, but tonight, as Larry said, I want to focus on democracy, voting rights, and where we're at. And I'm not saying that just because we have a new president, I've been very concerned about democracy for a long time, and I will tell you, I believe we have extremely serious threats for our democracy, and do not believe it is working well. The bottom line of democracy, take all theory and boil it down, is that what is supposed to happen, elections and people voting, is supposed to shape the public policy, otherwise the voting's no good. Now, we see it in other countries all the time, you know, they vote for something, nothing changes. They vote for something, it's like a big narrative, they call themselves an election that doesn't mean anything. Now, we're not there, but I do worry about it. So what I want to do is talk about some of these obstacles that are put up there, and what we can do about it. Because anytime there's obstacles to registration, to voting, to participation, to being heard, that lessens a chance that voters will shape public policy. Let me give an example, let me talk about Old Man Daley, okay, you know, the great Old Man Daley. Well, in the old democratic machine, you have to understand, I'm a Democrat, and maybe seen as partisan, the things I'm talking about tonight, I'll be glad, I think the Democrats are wrong, Republicans are wrong. But as someone who fought the democratic machine all my life, if you want to look at voter suppression, look at the old democratic machine, okay? And if you believe that some of those people elected, who could never be elected anywhere else in the country, really represented the average people, I think you've been smoking something. So there's lots of different kinds of voter suppression, and I'm no more happy about what they did then than what I'm happy about people trying to do today. And of course, the powerful want to control government and shape public policy, it's in their interest. The key is in a well-run democracy, is we don't let them do it, or we make it harder for them to do it. Okay, so the two major threats I'm gonna talk on briefly, some of these are pretty cute, but I don't think you're gonna see them. The two major problems are money in politics and voter suppression. I'm gonna skip through theirs fairly quickly, but money in politics, I think we all have a pretty good sense of that, that even before the Citizens United decision, money was having way too big a role to play. But in 2010, with the Supreme Court ruling on Citizens United, it moved us more rapidly from one person, one vote, to the new reality that money grossly amplifies your speech and influence. Grossly amplifies your speech. Way back in 1979, I was a young professor, I think I'd made you fourteen thousand dollars at, that was one of my college, that I was able to run, and with a gentleman in the back seat, I might pre-love able to win. And I wasn't a very wealthy guy. Today, largely because the inaction of our Congress and others on campaign finance and corporate wins, again, they've changed the entire fundraising game, and it's opened the floodgates for money. So money rather than people shape public policies, and has many other negatives, but again, if we have time to talk about it. Just one quick example, so if you look at fundraising in Illinois, from both parties in 2014, fifty-one percent of all the money raised by millionaires, fifty-one percent of all the money raised by both parties. Now, look at the Republican Party alone, and look at their hundred-some billion dollars that were raised. Over fifty percent came from three billionaires. Fifty percent of all that money came from three billionaires, a gentleman named Rader, a gentleman named Griffin, and a gentleman named Uline, okay? It says a lot, nothing against these individuals, we'd all like to be wealthy, but it's the way our country should be run. And let me go a little further, now you may not agree with this, but if you don't think money affects who gets elected and then how they govern, let me suggest this. I do not believe that either our current governor, a Republican, or our current mayor, a Democrat, will be in office today if we had even minimal decent campaign finance rules. Nothing against individuals, but my take of politics, without the kind of money that was spent, they would not have been elected. Another danger we're facing now is increasingly these powerful individuals, that, for example, and others, are massing millions of dollars on the side to pretty much force, intimidate, threaten the elected officials under them to go along. Okay, it takes a lot of courage for legislators to know, the governor's got fifty million dollars sitting there, you're gonna cross him. The mayor's got twenty million sitting there, you're gonna cross him? Now, some people do, fortunately, some people have guts, that those are trends, we need to find a way to stop. Also, our challenges today are tougher because of dark money, okay? And remember, part of it is not just unlimited money because of courts, but dark money. Most everybody would agree, Republican, Democrat, left, right, that there is transparency. Except now, dark money means you don't know where the money's coming from. And that can be a very scary thing, if you don't politics, you know, the easiest ways to raise are for those that have bad reputations. So dark money is a big challenge, and here's one fact, on there, in the Koch brothers, I get beat up a lot, but they raised four hundred and seven million dollars for seventeen various groups, but we don't know the source of the money. Four hundred and seven, that's a lot of bread. But it's not all doom and gloom, okay? There's a lot of good people, good organizations, because like the officials are doing things. Let's talk about some of the good things that are going on to challenge the money. Number one, Seattle. Seattle, back in 2015, passed a citizens initiative called Democratic Culture, some of you may know about. What it basically said is, we believe we have to have more competition, and we can't let money rule everything, so we, the city of Seattle, are going to say, each of our citizens that qualify, you know, duly registered voter, we're gonna give you four vouchers of twenty-five dollars each. And those vouchers you can use for the candidate of your choice, if the candidate's participating in this voluntary program. You may want to give twenty-five bucks to four people, you might give all four, twenty-five, you know, four times twenty-five to one candidate, okay? Now, the first time it's really going to affect is this year, so it's gotta be kind of a fascinating example to watch, because everything people are trying to do is trying to get around those very tricky Supreme Court decisions, okay? They basically said, yeah, the more money you have, the more speech you have. So Seattle's pretty exciting. California has been doing a lot to attack dark money. For example, they have all these ballot measures, remember California, this is such a big state, they're offering tens of millions of dollars in a ballot initiative. We don't really have those here in Illinois, we have some, but they're very different. So one of the things they did is they said, the top ten contributors have to identify, okay? More recently, because you never know who's giving all this money, okay? There could be the biggest polluter in the state, giving money, you would know it in there, supposedly for, you know, a clean river measure. So they're trying to identify those things, and so the latest thing they're saying, for those generic names, if you're the good government, California committee or whatever, then you have to also disclose the top two contributors that are paying for that ad. We're talking music about some very large amounts of money. So we have a lot of things California's doing. Small donor matching, small donor matching, is David Mountain here tonight? There's a lot of good shout-outs tonight for people doing things. Small donor matching is taking place in New York, and several eastern states, and the idea is that we will match smaller amounts of money, encourage you to raise your money in smaller donations, and we'll match it. And now, our own Senator Daniel Biss, has introduced legislation, Senate Bill 1424, to do just that in Illinois. And similar things are being discussed right now in Cook County, City of Chicago, Oak Park, and I believe that one's. Okay, now, this is a voluntary program, basically do the following. If you participate in this, again, you could get contributions of twenty-five to one hundred and fifty, but those will be matched at a six-to-one rate. So if you get twenty-five bucks from your neighbor, my math is right, then you'll get one hundred and fifty to match that. So it means now that you've had a chance to perhaps compete, you might be a wonderful person, extraordinary talent, articulate, committed, but you don't have any money. So you might be a great candidate. So there'll be other regulations, of course, limits on the amount of public funds available for each candidate, and you couldn't take large sums of money, which is the whole idea behind it. The Illinois Coalition for Political, Political, ICPR Reform, another great group, pay attention to that, they estimate the cost as being one dollar per resident. Okay, so that's, that's gonna, of course, be discussed, it's pretty fascinating. Okay, let me jump now to the second big threat, voter suppression. And I'm not gonna dwell on that, because you know it, I'll be glad to answer questions if you want, but kind of historically, when an individual, a candidate, or a party can't get elected fairly, a lot of times they'll stick to cheating or voter suppression. Obviously, the whole history of the South, and trying to, not just itself, but most of itself, trying to make sure that African-Americans couldn't vote, or if they could vote, it wouldn't have any effect, okay? A long history of that. And again, this is both parties, I suppose the Democrats in the South, by the way, in all my political career, I've, you know, most of the voter suppression today is being done in Republican states. But I have to say, unfortunately, there's made Democrats who do the same thing if they thought it would benefit them. I look at the city of Cicero, I like to pick on Cicero, but there, when the Democrats and Republicans work together, and there's always residents trying to suppress the vote, it wasn't that long ago, it was back in the mid-nineties, I had to go out there because the police were arresting Latinos, because he didn't have a permit to register voters. Well, there is no permit needed to register voters, but at that time, Latinos were a threat to that existing population, so the police were ordered by the mayors of Cicero, who has a great reputations over here, just to arrest them, okay? So there's a lot of things that have happened over the years. Some of the worst voter ID stuff has to do with voter ID, also redistricting, okay? Whether you're Democrat or Republican, you might ask, is it fair that the state of Virginia has a Democratic governor, has two Democratic senators, meaning the people by and large vote for Democrats, and yet the Republicans can throw the entire local house in there for a buck, like in San Diego, Carolina, Pennsylvania. People might argue and reverse of that in Illinois, although I think it's a little different. But redistricting is very important. Voter ID, and I've been dwelling on a lot, the main thing is, when things are done intentionally, okay, to prevent people from voting. A quick example, Texas is famous for, Texas in its brief before the court, with all its money spent, could not find one single case of voter ID where you needed, because someone actually pretended they were somebody else. They couldn't show one case, but they admitted in their own brief, that the six hundred thousand people be disenfranchised by this law, okay? Just to give an example of how absurd it can be, because it wasn't just blacks and Latinos that some of those legislators were after, they were after students. Okay, so in Texas, what they said, if you're a student, and you have your student ID for the state department of education, that's no longer any good. You got your ID in the state of Texas market, that's no longer any good, you gotta get a new ID. Okay, so that's, that's among the worst kinds. Legal voters, we got some legal voters here tonight, they do a great job, and they almost kicked out Florida, because Florida put down some terrible voter registration restrictions, they had to quit, because otherwise they could have been sued for a great amount of money, and fight in court, and a year or two later, they won in court, and that terrible law was thrown out. Now, things have worsened a little bit since that, okay? One, because the courts got into the Voting Rights Act. And what they did, this is something called preclearance, that historically, because of all the blatant discrimination, not all in the South, but Congress had passed a law, which they call basically preclearance, part of the Voting Rights Act, which says in some of these states, and some areas in the North as well, that had a history of discrimination in voter practices, that if you're gonna pass a new election law, you have to have preclearance from the Justice Department first. Well, the court, in their wisdom, just a couple of years ago, said, well, recent is done, there's no more things like this, so we don't need it. And within days, dozens of states had brand-new voter suppression stuff on the laws, okay? They'd been actually, it seemed like they were tipped on a decision, because they had all these laws ready to go for other kinds of voter registration, voter suppression schemes. Now, I know there's a great deal of misinformation today, coming from the White House, all this talk about massive fraud, talk about busloads who went to New Hampshire, et cetera. The problem with all that is it's good theater, and with a Republican or Democrat, I don't think you buy it, because nearly every Republican Secretary of State, and nearly every Republican county clerk says that's just not true. The problem is, that detracts us all from the real problem, every day in the South in the press, and that is this voter suppression. You know, a Chicago just did a study, pointing out the impact, that it does have an impact, voter suppression, on black and Latino voters. And so I just want you on my understanding about voter suppression, is these are not dumb people, these are smart people, this is surgical, this is intentional, and I've watched what's been going on in various White Houses for twenty-some years, and it's a little scary, what is going on. Okay, now, let's go to the good news, to smile. The good news is, the federal courts, at least in many cases up to now, have struck down many of these outrageous laws, Texas, Wisconsin, Virginia, North Carolina, number places, okay? Secondly, the Justice Department and President Obama did a whale of a job, I think, trying to really identify which voter laws would be good, which ones might be a suppression. And a lot of great organizations, and maybe China tonight, ACLU, Lawyers of Interest for Civil Rights, NAACP, the Brennan Center, lots of groups that fight on these issues, okay? Now, it's true, because the new president has given another challenge, he supported many voter suppression laws. The new attorney general, no offense, because he's a blatant racist, and in his career, sorry, no offense, but he's got a very racist background, and he also worked very hard on suppressing the vote in Alabama during his career. And we may well have a new five-to-four court in the near future. So if you want to do something, help these groups, okay? Help these groups, we need a fair fight, okay? We need a fair fight if we're gonna have elections at work. Now, let's focus for a couple of minutes on, on some good stuff, stuff going on between Illinois. We've been pretty lucky over the years, we've had some great legislators, some of them from this area that you all know, been helping us, but here's some of the things that we introduced successfully and passed, and I'll get to some of the current problems. Motor voter, which is something proposed way long time ago by President Clinton, Bill Clinton, I guess, motor voter allowed us to use things like, something funny about that, to use driver's facilities, other agencies, to make it really easy to register people. And of course, that, that totally worked, it's wonderful, it's a safe, secure way to do it, and the vast majority of people, that's how they registered on. Now, that was a big battle in Illinois, it's before some of your time, but at that time, we had to sue Governor Edgar, because he said, well, I could pay the law, and then the federal court said, you have to pay the law, I said, well, we don't have to, they said, yes, you do, and then they came up with a two-tier idea, that, okay, well, if you vote in federal elections, well, we'll pay the law, but if you vote in local elections, we'll make you register twice. Took him to court again, the court's ruled on our side, but it wasn't easy, because it was a threat to some people. Anyway, with the good news, early voting, we introduced that seven years ago, I think it's been a great success. Voting by mail, now, everybody can vote by mail if they want, I also believe that's been a big success. The team judge program, that is where we allow high school kids to serve as judges, it's great in so many ways, they get active, and they vote, and often that, they stay that way the rest of their careers. Using technology, registration online, it's sweeping the country, it's gonna be great, you just whip out your phone, because a lot of people move, and just register online, and come at the next election. If you're thinking of voting by mail, register to get you your application. Don't take the paper and then fill it out and send it to us, we send you back a ballot and all that stuff, boom, do it online, in seconds. Okay, so there's a lot of good things that are going on, so again, I don't think any legislators here tonight, but shout-out to all of our friends, again, to Mike Krelow, who represents our office in Springfield, and no person has that bigger job than bringing election reform in Illinois than Mr. Krelow. And all of these things are working well. Now, a couple of key battles that I want you to be aware of, we're, you know, kind of complete, you know, kind of a long list of things we'd like to see happen. One of those is automatic voter registration. Now, automatic voter registration is based on a very simple notion, one of them is, remember, people are mobile, you can't read this too well, I don't think, man, you can, I can't, but people are very mobile, seven hundred thousand people just in the county of Cook move every year, over a million statewide, we're a mobile society, okay? That's number one. Secondly, we have the technology. Third, almost everybody interacts with government nowadays, almost everybody in some way. So the point is, we have the ability now to have your registration stick with you. If Larry would move, you know, today to Bloomington, there is no problem, we can automatically update his registration. Why is that important? Number one, lists are very important to prevent fraud. Number two, you save a ton of money. Think about it, if we have thousands of people, when we mail out to you for the April 4th election, one point five million mailings, I'm gonna tell you where your polling place is, where the nearest voting spot is, look at the website if you want to see our voter's guide, all that kind of stuff. If we're mailing to fifty, a hundred thousand people in Cook County, that doesn't help anybody, does it? So we can do better. Now, the governor, we had a lot of Republican support, it did pass, the governor vetoed it, of course, totally disagreed, he basically wanted it to go into effect after 2018, can't figure out why, but honestly, we are negotiating, we're working with Republicans and Democrats in Springfield, to see if we can bring that back and make some improvements, and I've got good hopes on that right now. So hopefully it'll happen. Another very important thing that we introduced to the state is called ERIC. It's a synonym for Electronic Registration Information System, okay? Some of the stuff is not real sexy, so we almost don't. It means, states got together and said, you know what, we need to share data, okay? We need to make our list clean, and with modern technology, we can do it. So the state got together, and they call itself that, and here's some of the examples. We got a hallmark to join, thank you, Larry. So for example, the ERIC data, so we don't have it all yet, but the ERIC data says, we got thirty-four thousand people in Cook County that died, there's still in their rolls, okay? As county clerk, I do get the information about who passes away in Cook County, but some people have the nerve to die in other states, and do not tell us, and so that's where this thirty-four thousand comes from. And as more states join, ERIC, that number will grow. So forty thousand people, they'll, just like that, take off for this, another ninety thousand are registered twice in Illinois. No, we're not saying they're voting twice, but they're registered twice. They leave here, and they go someplace, and because we don't know it, there's still in our rolls, et cetera, and all wiped down. Sixty thousand move, those numbers are very important. Again, to fight fraud and to save money, like I said, we do not want to mail to all these people that moved or died or whatever, okay? And that is the future, and both Republicans and Democrats around the country, by and large, are moving ahead to do this. So ERIC is a great way to do it, Election Day Registration. I consider that a big victory, I think it's very important, that while we do all these things, improve registration, find easier ways to do things, there are still some people that lost or got caught in. And those people now, with Election Day Registration, they can still vote. Nothing's worse than some of them coming to the polls and being sent home. And in the last election, more than one hundred thousand people stayed in Illinois, got to vote through Election Day Registration. So we've proven the need, we've proven that it works for us listeners, it worked in Cook, it was seamless, but there is a group right now that is suing us and the state on that, I do think we will prevail with a minimal lawsuit on, they don't like some parts of the Election Day Registration, so that's a challenge. Everything I'm talking about tonight, I'm looking for, of course, volunteers and people to help, but I do think we'll win. Now, let's, let's finish up by talking about things related to protecting the ballot, making sure you feel comfortable about how you vote in Illinois County. The way we look at all of this is generally three ways, we look at first, everything that happens in terms of access to the ballot, registration, we've talked a lot about that. Then we talk about what happens Election Day, okay? Actually, we have election judges in the room, really important to make sure there's not intimidation, we could do more, people always want to know more about who these candidates are, I certainly promote a voter's guides in Illinois, we do something on our own website, it's something we do, you might look You might look at it, candidates that agree to put little bios about themselves. Because nothing's frustrating is not knowing who these people are, because people want to do the right thing. And you're embarrassed, you go for something, you find out, Larry's a real dog. So it is important to find ways to know as much as possible about the candidates. And then finally, the third part is the count, and what we do to make sure that count's okay. And let me just quickly tell you a couple of things. Number one, paper trail. Okay, now, what that means is, remember, in Cook County, suburban Cook particularly, you have a choice when you go to the polls, at least on Election Day. You can vote on a paper ballot and put up a scanner, or you can vote on the touchscreen. The touchscreens are by far the most popular. If we had more of them, we probably have 85% voting on touchscreens, people just like them. But the key for us is that we can create a paper trail of all of our ballots. The paper ballots are pretty simple. Unless someone burns them, they're there, okay? For all of our electronic ballots on the pro touchscreen, the paper trail that's on that thing next to the, where you vote, the paper trail's the official way, so we have all that. So that puts us in better shape than some. Now, second, we do forensic testing, which is really above my pay grade, but it's something that we do with some great vendors, and there's only a few places in the entire country that do this. And the bottom line of forensic testing is, you get people to, can take pictures, more or less, pictures of the software when you're preparing the ballot before the election, on Election Day and after Election Day. And the theory behind it, of course, is that by taking all these pictures and looking at it, you'll be able to detect if someone attempted to or successfully introduced some malicious software. And that's the theory. We do it, we look, it helps. Fortunately, all our test kits found nothing. Audits, you know, audits are important. We check the paper trails, we count thousands and thousands of ballots. And what's important about all these processes, and particularly the audits, okay? Is that all of them are open to the public, particularly open to the candidates and open to parties, and we have judges from both political parties always watching what goes on. And finally, you know, touch on what Larry mentioned it. There will be new election coming. It'll take a while. We had the Star and Plum Show, I think it was pretty interesting. I think we're going to do another one of those, just for those who missed out. And then there'll be a process, a RFP process, where those companies around the country will compete for our business. So anyway, there's a lot of reasons why I think that's going to help us, because, you know, as Larry said, technology is advancing, and in so many ways, technology advances, there's ways that you can do audits more successfully. This idea of calibration, you could improve that a great deal. So there'll be a lot of good stuff coming out. So let me conclude, because I might take too long here to forget the questions. There's a great deal to worry about, obviously. Many, many things we should be concerned about, about preserving our democracy. I don't want us to be too depressed, or too paranoid. I like this example, for those of us as ancient as I am. That, and if you talk to people in 1953 or 1954, oh my God, the country's going to hell, McCarthyism, get arrested, blah, 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 all that thing because of that. And yet, a few years later, the young guy in Kenneth Kennedy was elected president. So there is a pendulum that goes back and forth, and hopefully, sometimes that corrects things. As Martin Luther King said, "The arc of a moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice." But that arc doesn't bend on its own. And again, coming to places like this, we got a lot of very talented people in the room, a lot of people are active, take citizenship seriously. I imagine we got some election judges here. So the key to me, as we move ahead, is people of conscience. I don't care if you're a Democrat, Republican, Independent, whether you're a politician, whether you're an activist, whether you're a church member. If people of conscience step up on these major issues of the day, about making our democracy work fair. Because I do believe most of us would agree, we may want our particular candidate to win, but above all, we want the system to work, okay? If my Republican opponent gets more votes fairly, they should be in office, okay? We don't preserve that right, and we let money and tricks and games interfere. Not only will we not elect any good people, but the policy those people implement will not serve our interests. So I'm pretty confident, really, if people of conscience stand up, we will make a difference. Thank you, Larry, for sponsoring this.